Okay, your man.
Yep.
Yes, all right, we're ready to go. We're opening the hearing for number four Pine Needle Lane in Georgetown. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape-recorded for the purpose of recording minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. I'd like to introduce the members of the board today. We have Gina Tebow, Sharon Freeman, Jeff Moore, and I am Paul Schillen. So we'll read the legal notice and we can get started.
Okay. A public hearing will be held on November 13th, 2012, at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor, at 7:30 PM to hear an application by Charles and Nicole Lawrence of four Pine Needle Lane, Georgetown, Mass., in the RB District, and identified on Assessor's Map 19, Lot 48L. The applicant requests a special permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, and Section 9, and of the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapters 165, 9, 10.1, 78, and 79, to construct a pool cabana 50 percent closer to the side lot line than allowed in the RB zone. Chapters 165, 10.1 allows side and rear setback reductions by 50 percent for accessory structures, ZBA File Number 13-05.
Thank you, sir. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Go ahead. You have to just go and lay out what you're applying for, that's all.
Okay. Just a pool cabana, 50 percent closer to the 20-foot setback required by the side lot line.
Just if you want some background, he came in and met with Charles, and then he was building inspector, and he had the pool and the cabana, and because of the accessory building bylaw, he made the pool fit. He couldn't make the cabana fit. So he brought the pool within the zoning setback.
Yep.
Had someone come in and help him do that, and he did that with the building inspector, and so that's only one accessory building.
Great.
Worked on it for a couple, going back a couple days.
Can I ask a brief question?
Please do.
You have a plan up there for the sake of everybody else who's here. Do you mind just explaining kind of what's on your plan?
Sure. Can I get up?
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Kind of have hazard up there, so be careful, Charles.
Yeah.
We also have it.
Yeah, we have it here, too.
So as you can see, it's just, all the lots on this street are odd, are very strange. And my neighbor here, he actually has property behind me. So we had a small area in which to work with. Again, as Patty said, our goal was to meet the requirements of only one accessory structure. Initially, I had applied for the pool to be 10 feet away as well. I learned that that wasn't possible, so we made that adjustment and moved the pool so that it does meet the standard setback requirement of 20 feet. Here in my backyard, and actually, there's some drainage that goes out right here. There's actually a big pipe that goes out from about the corner of the foundation out here, and it serves as the drainage. If you looked at my backyard, it's all graded towards this corner here. So this is why the pool cabana has been placed here. It keeps it away from that drainage area and still allows the backyard to drain the way that it was originally designed. If I was to move it up to the 20-foot standard, I obviously would have a problem with drainage. So what we have now is, this is the pool, and this is the positioning of the cabana in relation to our existing home.
Are there any other neighbors, structures, or homes? Where's everybody else in this? I can see your neighbor's house is right to the left there.
Here, yes, and then my other neighbor is above here.
So you're not really causing any inconvenience for your neighbors? Looks like it's plenty far away.
Correct.
Is the cabana within the fencing for the pool?
Yes, it is. The fence will actually run here and then along the back here. So yes, absolutely.
Great.
Will it go straight? I saw the string in the back.
Yes.
Will it go along that?
Yes, exactly.
Or will it be sort of angled?
Yes, exactly. We're on the property line.
Okay. And your neighbor knows that?
Yes, he does.
On the right side?
Absolutely.
So you have a slope in the back? You have a drainage pipe that runs out? Is your septic back there as well, or is that?
No, that's actually here.
On the side, okay.
On the side.
But you have a slope that runs from your rear of your house towards the rear of your lot? Is that right, or you have?
Yeah, so if you walk around this side of the house here, everything is sloped toward, graded towards this corner right here.
Gotcha, okay. So that's the low part of the lot?
Absolutely.
Kind of where that's?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that wooded back there as well, or?
It's wooded, actually, behind the property line, actually.
Any other questions, the board?
Are any of your neighbors here?
They're not. I actually, I have a letter from one of my neighbors that I brought with me.
There's one gentleman. Would you like to speak, or are you just a?
Just an observer.
Well, I'm officially in, but I represent the Board of Trustees of the Georgetown.
That's great, okay. Yeah, could you just, let us know who you are?
Chuck Peterson is my name.
Okay.
Peterson?
Yes.
And your address?
Seven Rand Court.
Okay.
And I just wanted to know, I didn't see the plan, where exactly it was going to be located, and what the dimensions of the cabana were going to be.
The outside dimensions are 20 foot 4 inches by 16 feet 4 inches. And if you want to take a look at the plan, it's right there, you can see where the outline of this sort of...
What's the height of the building?
Yeah, I can give them a...
Well, I know it's a one-story. I don't know. You guys know what the height of it is?
Yeah, I think it's...
Ridge height, 10 feet. So is that a pool? Here, go. This is layout of the pool.
Yeah, 10 feet.
10 feet.
Aight.
And it's 10 feet tall. I don't know if you have it.
10 feet 1 inch tall.
So this is to the...
To the back.
The house is located right here.
Correct.
And you're going to build the cabana over the last quarter.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My only other question would be is, how close are you to the conservation property?
How close am I? We're certainly, we're not, I mean, we're certainly way outside of the 100-foot buffer zone.
Yes, Steve looked at it. Conservation agent looked at it.
Okay. Okay. That was our concern about the conservation area, because the association is very conscious about what the conservation area has been, and what they have said to us about how we relate to the conservation area. And so we've been very judicious about how we've approached anything we've done relative to the conservation area.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we, our lot is far enough away. If we were at six Pine Needle, we would have issues. No question about it. But we are outside of that area.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Sharon, did you have something to say?
I actually went and saw the property, and I met your neighbor on the right of you as you crossed your house, and he was supportive, particularly because the cabana, which does go onto his property, but it's not usable in the back, and it's on the other sort of side of him, and it seemed fairly far away from the other neighbor.
Wait, you said the cabana goes on his property?
No, no, no.
Oh.
I think, at least if I understood correctly, because the back line of the property...
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
His property is back there, yes.
Where it doesn't meet the setback.
Yeah.
It's not on his property, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no.
For the setback issue became because of how your lot is.
Yep.
But he seems supportive of it.
And I, like I said, I brought a letter from the neighbor on the other side as well, indicating that he is, he's okay with this as well.
Did you want to read that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read that in as I correspond, that would be fun.
Okay. So it's dated October 16th. "To whom it may concern, in response to the special permit letter we received regarding the 10-foot side lot line clearance for four Pine Needle Lane, please note that we have no issue with this, and are in favor of the exception being granted. Please contact us if you have any further questions. Sincerely, Craig and Leah Giannino, six Pine Needle Lane."
Thank you.
Can you spell Giannino?
Sure, it's G.I.A.N.N.I.N.O.
Do you need a copy of that, Patty, or?
Yes. Can I copy that and get it back to you?
You can have that. Any other discussion for the board? Someone want to make a motion? We can discuss it further if we choose to.
One other question I have.
Yes, sir, yeah.
There exists on the back corner...
Can you just, yeah, come up and sit at the podium. I'm sorry, you got to do it the right way, and then, and talk to us.
Yeah, Chuck Peterson again. I did notice in looking at the area that there's a small shed that's approximately, I think, in the area where the cabana is to be built. I didn't know if that was part of their property or part of the people at probably six, number six, Pine Needle.
Don't know. Can you read that?
So you are correct. That is our shed that was there when we moved into the house a year ago. We have plans to move that. That will be, it's only a 10-by-12 shed, so it's easily going to be able to be moved, and we are going to move that.
So the cabana will be really in that area then, right?
It's actually to the right of it, and a little bit closer to, closer to, I guess, the right property line.
To number six.
No, closer to actually number two.
Oh, okay, Bob.
Yes, Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
And that second shed, where it will be, what, within the setbacks?
It will be, yes.
Just as an overview, typically, up until recently, you couldn't build anywhere inside the 20-foot setback in this case. And what they're asking for is 50 percent relief, which is a section specifically allowed for in Section 165, 10.1 of the code, which allows for up to 50 percent relief, which is in this case 10 feet from the rear lot, right? Or is this the side lot? Provided you meet certain conditions in the bylaw, which they've met. You can't occupy more than 25 percent of the required lot. Has to be setback no less than eight feet behind the front plane of the house, which it is. It shall be located closer, not be located closer to the lot line than 50 percent of the required side, which is they've done, they're no more closer than 10 where 20 is required. It should not exceed 560, 576 square feet in the area, with no walls longer than 24 feet, and shall not exceed 15 feet in height, which it meets. Roof dormers shall only be located towards a public way. I assume you don't have any dormers on this, only 10-foot high shed. No more than one detached accessory building or pool within reduced setback is permitted. In other words, you can't have more than one piece of, one accessory structure on your property that can fall into this category of setback. And all used for residential habitation are prohibited within the accessory building, so you don't have a mother-in-law staying in there. Anyway, just for everybody's information, that's what we're dealing with. So they get a special permit in this case, as long as they meet those requirements, and other special permit requirements that every special permit has to meet.
Sure, make a motion, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the board grant a special permit to Charles and Nicole Lawrence of four Pine Needle Lane, Georgetown, Mass., 0833, in the RB District, and identified on the Assessor's Map, 19 Lot 48L, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Section 9, and 79, special permit, and Chapter 165, Section 10.1, which is what I think you were just referring to. The board finds accessory building bylaw, Chapter 165, Section 10.1, allows by special permit to construct a pool cabana accessory structure 10 feet, which is 50 percent closer to the side lot line than allowed in the RB zone per Chapter 165, Section 10.1, that allows side and rear setback reductions by 50 percent for accessory buildings. I further move the board finds the special permit application meets the requirements 165-79A3D, and they are specifically, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. The requested use will not overload any public water or other municipal system so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. And finally, the requested use will not cause in excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood.
Someone like to second that? Motion?
This is my voice, I'll second it.
Further discussion, if there is any?
I think it's pretty clear that they've met these requirements. I think they've done a pretty good job of outlining that. And I think you worked pretty closely with the building inspector as well, to make sure that what you were doing was meeting the requirements ahead of time. So it appears to me that, you know, you were careful about meeting the particular guidelines in here, so appreciate that. I think it's a reasonable request.
I think the fact that the neighbors, you went out to your neighbors, too, says a lot to keep them happy.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Want to close it?
Okay.
Yes. Oh, yeah, no, you have to read.
I'd like to notify, there is a 20-day appeal period. Following 14 days, the clerk has to file a written decision within, with the town clerk. The person who exercises rights under this, under an appealed special permit variance does so at risk. And I'd like to close the hearing. Thank you.
Motion to close.
Oh, motion to close, thank you. Someone like to make a motion to close?
So move.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You need to meet the appeal period before you start building, but I assume you're not going to be using this till probably next year.
Correct.
I'm going to write the petition, they're going to sign the petition, town clerk will stamp it, this volume.
Okay.
And then I'll give you registry instructions.
She recorded your actual...
So I'll call you when it's ready.
Excellent.
Maybe we can get it signed before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I put scale rulers in the calculator here for the accessory apartments. Are you trying to get my attention?
Yes. I'm going to ask you to read it. Hey. Gina, darling, Gina. No, no, I only was, I saw you were busy, so I spelled.
Do you need me to put this here for you?
Hey, Gina.
Are you ready to go right into it?
I spell it differently. I spell it the way Tim spells it.
Actually, doesn't he spell it with a W?
Are you ready for that?
I don't know. I am ready for the next one. Are you guys ready for the next one? She's got the...
You got the legal ad?
She has the legal ad, yes.
I want to just, I just made it so you can pick the whole thing up.
Gina has it.
So clever. There we go. Is Chris getting that on camera, okay?
Oh.
Well...
Sharon did such a good job of that.
We'll see how it goes.
Hey, Jim.
Okay. Sharon, shall I, you ready?
Sure.
Okay, great.
You wanted me to read something.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Good evening. Good. We're opening the meeting now for, where are we? What is the actual address? 172 West Main Street. Well, there's a lot of addresses on here, so I need to get the right one. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape-recorded for the purpose of recording minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. And again, I'll introduce the members. We have Gina Tebow to my left, Sharon Freeman, and Jeff Moore, and I am Paul Schillen. Gina is going to read the legal notice for us.
A public hearing will be held on November 13th, 2012, at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor, meeting room, immediately following the first scheduled hearing at 7:30, for an application filed by current owner Oak Hill Financial, LLC, James Bussing, Sr., 160 West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass., who has a purchase and sale agreement with James Alden and J&amp;J Developers, co-applicant with Michelle Benjager and Angela Lorino of 37 Haviland Ave, Lynn, Mass., for the property located at 172 West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass., formerly 170 West Main Street. Ah, I couldn't see what was different, sorry. 170 Main Street for a special permit under MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Sections 9, 69, and 79, for an accessory apartment and a new single-family dwelling. The premises affected is 172 West Main Street in the RA District, and identified on Assessor's Map, 6D Lot 110, was combined with Lot 109I, Plan Book 431-80, CBA File Number 13-06.
Thank you. You guys can now just give us some background on what we're looking at here.
Sure. My name's Jim Alden. I'm the managing partner of J&amp;J Developers, and I was approached by Angela and Michelle several months ago to look for a lot to build a single-family home that they wanted to put an in-law in. Georgetown was on the top of their list, so when this lot came up, they were very excited about it. The house was modified from a standard single-family home. We basically took the garage space and converted that into the in-law space, to keep it as a, you know, the look of a single family. So we kept the design aspects, you know, going off the requirements of Georgetown to stay at 33 percent of the livable floor area, or 700 square feet, whichever the maximum is. So we're at 629 square feet for the livable in-law section.
Got it? Yep. One quick question I had right off the bat. How does the whole, it's pretty easy. The driveways are going, the driveway will come off of West Main, and then you'll just circle around to the front of the building with a walkway or something like that?
Yes. Yep. Yep, it's going to be a walkway that basically comes off the driveway here, right into the porches here.
Yeah. So you're within the setbacks and all that sort of thing?
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry.
Any questions from the board?
I would...
Yeah, I will. Don't worry, we're just... So the front of the house faces Richardson?
It does, yes.
The address is West Main, is that right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
It's interesting for us, because usually, these are existing buildings. So, you know, and so my, always my first concern is, does it really still look like a single-family home? That's the desire of in-law apartments, and I, and the drawings from the architect here, I think that looks very reasonable for the appearance of a single, it does not look like there's an apartment there, like you said, it takes the place of the garage.
Right.
Can you talk about the relationship of the occupant of the, proposed occupant of the apartment versus the proposed owner? What's the plan?
Michelle and Angela.
My mother and daughter.
Hi.
Mother and daughter.
Okay.
So they are co-owners of the home.
Okay. So mom's going to be living in the in-law, or? Actually, it doesn't really, it doesn't actually matter, I don't think. So you're going to own the home together?
Correct.
Joint ownership?
Correct.
Okay. And you're the builder?
Yes, I am.
But right now, you own the project, essentially. That's why you're, you are representing the actual owner of the property who's not here. You're legally...
They are here.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yes.
Yep. The eventual owner is you two.
Correct.
Right. And I just wondered, Patty, is there... The special permit would have to be in their...
I think we talked about that, that because it says in the bylaws that if it transfers ownership, it's null and void, or they would have to reapply. So we're applying kind of, I guess, co-applicants, but it's really would be granted to them.
Yes, yes, I understand.
You're applying for Michelle and Angela?
Correct.
As owners of Oak Hill, and you have a purchase and sale agreement?
Yes, we have a purchase and sales, and I have a purchase and sales with Jim for the land.
Yeah. So I think what would happen in this case, we're maybe getting a little ahead of ourselves, but I think in this case, the special permit would have to be in their name, in the owner's name, in Michelle and Angela's name, since you have a P and S.
Right.
And if anything happens with the purchase and sale down the road, you're going to have to come back and get a permit for, you know, you're going to have a house with an in-law in it.
Yeah.
That's your issue, not ours.
Right, right.
Or it can be converted back to something other than an in-law.
Right.
Somehow, but...
Well, yes, if you have, you have...
Well, the whole, yeah, and the whole idea behind an in-law, obviously, is, you know, but for the benefit of everybody else in the room who may be interested in this project, is that you can either convert or build, you know, part of your home, as long as it looks like a single-family home, with the idea that it runs with ownership only, so that if that property is sold, then that single-family home can then be reworked back into a single-family home, and it's going to look and act like a single-family home. If you sell your house with an in-law apartment, the special permit automatically expires. So if someone, potential buyer wants to come in, continue to use it as an in-law, they would have to come to the zoning board and get a special permit like you're doing now. Or it would have to be converted back to a garage or a living room, or whatever it is. Could you go through the design a little bit for me, unless somebody else has some other questions? You've got, you know, just talk about the overall design plan, how the apartment works in relation to the rest of the house and so forth.
Well, again, where the garage was, the first floor of the garage is now, is going to be a kitchen, kind of an eat-in kitchen, with the living area on the first floor. There is a second floor to the in-law, with a bedroom and a master bathroom, a large walk-in closet, and that's pretty much it. There is a full basement under that as well. It's not livable space, it's just for storage.
And the access to the basement is from the...
Is from the in-law, under the stairs. Traditionally, as, you know, the second floor stairs, there'll be a basement stairs going down.
And is that all, is the basement continuous into the main part of the house, or are the two separate full basements?
No, it's open, will be open.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So you have a separate entry?
Separate front entrance, yes.
Separate front entry and a separate...
There's a rear entrance that is going to spill out onto a deck that will actually encompass both the in-law and part of the main house. They'll share this kind of a large...
You're going to run that right across?
Yes.
In other words?
Yep. And then the rest of the house is, you know, a traditional home. It's, first floor is a dining room, kitchen, a larger kitchen, possibly eat-in, large family room. The first floor has a laundry and a half-bath, and they've chosen this design where it's kind of close to her entrance, and they're going to kind of share that laundry.
Makes sense, actually.
And then on the second floor, we get three bedrooms, a separate office upstairs, and a master bedroom and a full bathroom.
So you have one access point between the two upstairs and one downstairs, and you're sharing the downstairs bath, I assume, as well, which kind of makes sense.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think, yeah. While you guys are perusing this, any members of the audience who can approach, tell us who you are, where you live, and please talk directly to the board if you have any questions or comments.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Leanne Plant. My husband Steve and I live at 1 Richardson Lane, which is the house across the street. I know that the concern for the board is that the house comply with the plans, and that does, it still looks like a single-family home. I don't want to speak to my neighbors, but I think we all are concerned about the occupancy of the unit, and that it's, I believe it has to stay in the family. If, I've been here almost two years, and I came from Walden, I'm having trouble adapting from the city to the country life. And I think about mom and how she's going to adapt, and what happens if she wants, misses her network, her social network, her friends, and wants to leave. Who rents, who comes into that apartment? If it has to be a family member, who's next in line to rent that apartment? That's our, that's a concern that we have.
Sure.
If it has to be a family member, who's next in line to rent that apartment? That's our... That's a concern that we have.
Sure.
The answer is it has to be a family member, a direct family member. You cannot rent this apartment out as a rental unit. Let me just see what the specific code... Well, let me read the purpose and intent. That'll help answer it as well. The purpose and intent is a specific intent of the bylaw to allow accessory apartments, including kitchens, within single-family properties for the purposes of meeting special housing needs of grandparents, parents, brothers and sisters, children and their respective spouses of families of owner occupants properties. To achieve this goal and to promote the other objectives of this section, specific standards are set forth below for such accessory apartment use. The special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals shall authorize use, which is why they're here today. The owner occupancy is required. So first of all, the owner must occupy the residence. And now where you're co-owners, it actually brings up a good point. I don't know if they're both gonna be required to reside there or not. That's perhaps a legal question. But in any event, the special permit shall only be issued to the owner of the property. Should there be a change in ownership in the residence of the owner, the special permit shall... And certificate of occupancy for the accessory apartment shall become null and void. Sorry, I'm looking for the section of the book. Yeah, section, Patty, what am I missing for the...
You're still at sixty-nine or...
Yeah. And we condition these typically that the accessory apartment must be occupied by a family resident... By a member of the family.
They have to be related by blood or affinity. Cannot be used as a rental property. If the house is sold or transferred, it has to... Those special permit lapses and the new owner must apply to the board for a new special permit. And then the other two conditions we usually do is the apartment is inspected by the building inspector before occupancy and then...
The condition we put in there to specifically address her question of residency of the apartment. I think you read it, but it was quick. Can you read that again?
The accessory apartment be... Oh, be occupied by relatives only, not to be used as a rental property.
That would be a condition of the special permit.
My question is if, you know, I'm sure she's gonna be quite happy there, but if, in fact, she's not and there's some reason why she wants to leave, who's waiting in the wings? Who has a family member waiting in the wings to move into an apartment? Who's next in line? It's a difficult thing to imagine that someone has another family member to move in. And I'm just concerned that it would turn into a rental unit. We would have no...
The minute somebody's in there that's not a family member, all you have to do is get down to the building inspector and let him know that you think something is being used for a rental property where they don't have permission to do it. And they... The occupancy permit for that portion of the dwelling will be null and void. So, you know, John doesn't necessarily go out every day looking for apartments that are, you know, being accessory apartments that might not have relatives in them, but if anybody comes to the building department and notifies them in writing that you have a complaint essentially or a concern, he would come out and investigate what's going on. And if there is a special permit for an accessory apartment in place and there isn't a family member living there and the condition of the special permit requires it, then that use would no longer be allowed. He'd basically... What would he issue, Patty?
Cease and desist.
Not a cease and desist, but an eviction notice of some kind that would prevent that from happening.
Okay, because that would change the environment a little bit if it were used for a tenant. That would be a tenant one year, another tenant the next year.
Absolutely.
Richardson Lane, I think, is a little bit different. I know that's in West Main Street, but it's an environment that to have a constantly moving tenant would be not what we bought into, that's for sure. And I'm sure I can speak for my neighbors as well.
Thank you for letting me out.
Yeah, yeah, no, sure. What's that?
It's the biggest issue when we grant these things is that it does may... It does stay as family members only. And it's important to us that as a special permit, it does not transfer to the next owner. That apartment becomes null and void when the property gets sold. So, yes, it is up to the citizens to sort of keep an eye. If they feel like something's amiss here, then certainly we need to... Somebody needs to report it. Somebody needs to notice it. And there's a lot of... There's a lot of small, little apartments all over, you know, in every town that are illegally being occupied right now.
May I speak?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Just to, you know, ease her mind, I'm going... I'm sixty-six years old, going on sixty-seven. She's my only daughter. And where am I gonna go if I move out of there in a nursing home? It's, you know, seriously, I mean, I plan on, you know, I don't see... You know, we're looking forward to it. We have a great relationship.
Absolutely.
And I don't see my... Who would wanna rent it to strangers? It's so part of the same house. It's, you know, it's just not our cup of tea.
Exactly. That's why it's important that it looks like this.
Exactly, you know.
That's the key. That's what we're protecting.
Absolutely.
When people don't do this, then we don't generally allow it. If there's an obvious addition of the building, doesn't look like it belongs, it looks like an apartment, then we don't allow it.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Sure.
And, you know, and it's also why the bylaw's written this way and why the special permit's written this way because nobody knows what's gonna happen down the road. Nobody can predict what could possibly happen. And if... That's why if ownership changes or relationship changes or something, who knows? Maybe you do wanna move to Florida. Can't imagine it, but you might. The fact of the matter is that you have to have a relative living there. If there are no relatives living there, then what you do is you keep the house. You convert that back to a larger living space or whatever it would be. This typically, you know, you're designing this house with this concept in mind initially. A lot of times, people will take their existing, single-family home, convert a section of it, perhaps maybe put on a small addition or what have you to allow for an extra kitchen or a bathroom or something. And but while maintaining a single-family characteristic, when that use is no longer... When the house is no longer being used for that purpose, it's then converted back. And that's a cost and expense that people need to think about when they buy a home with, you know, an accessory apartment or they choose to some point in the future, no longer use it for that purpose. You're gonna have to spend some money to convert this back to a single-family home without the apartment in there. But that's the way it goes. But the whole reason we allow for these is to put exactly the purpose that you're explaining, which is you'd like to live together and support one another and stay in town. So I don't know if that helps answer your question at all, but...
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Any other... I guess we can make a motion.
I have one other question, actually. Oh, go ahead. Do you have some? I don't think it came up here. Parking sometimes is, you know, comes up in these cases, but it looks to me like you find out. How many spaces you've got? Do you have a garage now or no? You took the garage? What would be the garage?
We took it out and they were fine with that, that they were fine with not having a garage.
Okay, so... Which is actually a nice consideration. You didn't make this that much larger and put the garage on to kind of screw up the design.
Yeah.
You enclosed the apartment in what would be the garage.
It's not near easement at all.
But you've got spaces, it looks like, for at least two or three... Well, including up against the house, probably four vehicles there.
Right, yeah.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Did you say the deck would be one?
Yeah, I think on that plan, the designer just didn't show it on the back. If you look on the floor plan on the first floor...
It's connected.
You can see how it's connected, yeah.
So is there something different in the plan that's changed?
It's just... No, no, on the... Actually, on the...
Looking at this one and...
On the plot plan, it does show them together here. And on the first floor, it does. It's just when they drew the rear view.
So that's the front of the house?
Yeah. So when they drew the rear view, she hadn't... She hadn't connected this. So it's actually connecting across here.
I'm actually confused on how your... What the front entrance is. So I see in the screen is in the back. So you're gonna come in the driveway. Where's the entrance to the main living? Am I missing it right here?
Yep. There's a long porch right there.
All right, and it just... Because it looks like the pavement stops, so there'll be a walkway, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody else has any concerns in the audience, I guess?
I don't believe so. Passed a couple times.
Yeah, this was an A&amp;R, so it wasn't much.
It's just the orientation screwed me up.
I feel like it should be... You should be... Your address should be Richardson, not West Main.
There was a A&amp;R. There was a... They went to the planning board for an A&amp;R, which is just an approval, not required, and because it was an undersized lot and Mr. Bussing sold.
I think they combined two pieces of land to make it...
And I have that.
Conform to all the zoning requirements, yeah.
Which made the lot buildable.
Gotcha.
To meet the requirement.
You got the frontage on West Main.
Yes.
But the... And we went through this when Jim came in because, you know, it was 170 West Main, but the assessor gives out the... So the address had to be on West Main Street. And it was decided the driveway should also be on West Main Street.
Right.
The driveway to be on Richardson Lane is an easement on the... If you look at the side, that easement there. I mean, to put a driveway on Richardson, they would have to go back before the planning board.
I just... I was just confused on how your... I got my... I've got it down now.
I'm ready to make a motion on this if anybody's ready to hear one. Do you have any other questions?
There's definitely no other audience. Please check that right.
Oh, I guess.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Then I'd like to move that the board... Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the total square foot of the home?
The single-family side is seventeen fifty.
And then in the...
The main house. Yeah, that's livable square feet.
Okay, that's what... All right.
Yeah.
Dave was asking, David Flora. Dave had called and said that he didn't have a chance. He didn't see anywhere in the plan where it had the total livable floor area. Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead.
No, actually, well, that's...
Patty asked the question last week.
That followed. So the total square foot of the home...
Of the main dwelling is seventeen fifty. That's the livable square footage, which under the... It doesn't include bathrooms, closets, foyers. The whole house combined with the in-law is somewhere around thirty-two hundred square feet.
Okay, I was gonna say it needs to be at least twenty-one hundred for the seven hundred feet to be no more greater than thirty-three percent of the total livable.
Right.
And you exceed that by...
Yeah, well, it reads... It's either thirty-three percent or seven hundred, whichever is greater. Yeah. So we're at six twenty-nine.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. All right, then I'd like to make a motion to grant to Oak Hill Financial LLC. Actually, scratch that.
Anyone else?
No, I'm... I think we wanna grant this to...
Yeah.
Michelle Benninger and Angela.
Just bear with me for a second because I wanna make sure I get this right.
I'm so confused.
If you do it to... We usually do it to the owner, but they're both owners, so...
It would be to both of them. That's what's on the application.
I'm just thinking down the road.
They're with the same family, so...
All right. No, I'm thinking about Jim.
Oh, yeah, because...
As far as...
You're a co-applicant and you're still with... There's two P&amp;Ss going on.
He needs to get a building permit.
No, he's just applied for...
I'm just applying.
He's applied on behalf of them.
Because technically, Jim still owns it.
That's right, but the special permit will go to them and it won't be really be in effect until he actually owned the property. He applied on behalf of Michelle and Angela.
If it just kind of like the legal ad read with Oak Hill. What I'm saying is with Oak Hill, with Jim Bussing in there, just kind of basically how the legal ad...
You're gonna occupy it?
He wants to.
You're gonna have to live there. I don't think you wanna do that.
No, I'm just...
Or your family member.
I'm granting it to them, but with... I'm just...
It's a condition.
Down the road, I'm just...
What are you worried about on the...
Because they don't actually... Well, I mean, if it falls through, then they don't have it anyway.
Then you gotta come back here.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Just I'm thinking for a head.
It's granted to them. If they don't buy it, then...
Right.
I'm not... I don't have a... Yeah.
You'd have to go through this again.
I have to come back. If I wanted to sell it to someone else, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Or move in.
It's a nice town. I think that's it.
Actually, you can't. Oh, yeah. If we give it granted to them, you can't. Patty, you okay with that? She writes the ads and so forth too, so we have to try and be as consistent as we can with the ads. So I think I wanna make a motion to grant to Michelle Benninger... Benninger?
Benninger.
Benninger and Angela Loreno of 37 Haviland Ave, Lynn, Mass., who shall reside in the dwelling for property at 172 West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass., 01833, in the RA District, a special permit under Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 165, Sections 9, 69, 78, and 79, for an accessory apartment in a new, single-family dwelling. Finding the application meets the requirements of Chapter 165, Sections A through G. The apartment does not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable floor area of the primary building. The accessory apartment shall be six hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Correct? The board... I move that the board further find that the special permit application for an accessory apartment meets zoning bylaws 165, 79, A through D with the following conditions. The accessory apartment only be occupied by relatives of the owner, not to be used as rental property, and the primary dwelling must be owner occupied per bylaw, Chapter 165, 69B. If the house is sold, transferred, or if there is any change in occupancy, the special permit lapses and the new owner must apply to the board for a new special permit. The apartment shall be inspected by the building inspector before occupancy per Chapter 165, 69D. Be built per plan submitted to the ZBA application, plot plan certified by William G. Holt, PLS, of 83 West Main Street, Merrimack, Mass., dated September 22nd, 2012, and floor plans drawn by Martha McGinnis, 58 Region Ave, Bradford, Mass., 01835, and floor plan sheet number two, proposed first floor plan, and sheet number three, proposed second floor plan.
Let me make the second up, please. Further discussion?
I'm gonna catch my breath. I got some discussion. As usual, I can't summarize these things. I think it's a pretty, you know, it's a really pretty good job. We've seen several of these come through that are a little questionable as far as a single-family dwelling thing. And we've sort of learned our lesson over the years that I've been on the board that, you know, we really have to, for all the reasons that a lot of folks are concerned here tonight, you know, we really wanna keep that single-family dwelling look and feel of these things because we can really risk degrading some neighborhoods if we don't do that. So I think this is, you know, pretty well done in that regard. And so, you know, I'm in favor of it. Obviously, I made the motion, so...
Hundred percent.
I think it was well thought out.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Patty?
Yes.
There'll be a twenty-day appeal period following fourteen days. Clerk has... The clerk has to file a written decision with the town clerk. Our clerk has to file with the written decision with the town clerk. A person who exercises rights under an appealed special permit does so at risk. And I'd like to make a motion to... Oh, motion to close.
So move.
Second? All those in favor? Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll call you when it's ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.